Okay. We got it. All right. Okay, so anyway, let's call this meeting to order. We got a few things here. Small Cities Committee Meeting, Monday, August 1st, 2022. It's now 6:18 PM. Present, we have myself, Drake Waldron, and members, Carrie Hona, and Armin Manisha. And so let's go to our agenda. Number one. Is there any public comment in person only? Anybody there?
Nobody that looks like they want to comment.
Okay, we'll move on. Number two. Project number 143-SC1801-14-REHAB. To authorize project approval to VIVNANVITO Roofing and Siding Incorporated of Meriden, Connecticut, for $10,776 for the replacement of front and rear storm doors, the basement bulkhead and hatchway doors, replace windows, wallboard repairs, electrical and lead-based paint mitigation at 89 Blake Street, pending City Council approval. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hona. Second?
Can you second it?
It's gonna have to be you.
Yeah, it's not Armin.
I'm just a visitor.
Oh, I thought he was Dave.
It's just Dave.
It is not, but that's all right. Two out of three. I guess I'll second. So, all right. So, any discussion?
Nope.
Sounds good to me. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. All right. Motion passes. Number two. Number three. Project number 143-SC1801-18. Vote to authorize project approval to Alberta Construction Company of Manchester, Connecticut, for $3,950 for asbestos abatement at 42 Pittian Avenue, pending City Council approval. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion by Councilman Hona, second by Councilman Waldron. Okay, any discussion? I'll say this. It's interesting that the next two items here, we have asbestos abatement, but where's the rest of the project? Usually, we get the whole, the whole thing thrown at us. So this is different. To just do the abatement, and then, you know, something's coming. They don't do projects just for the abatement.
I was wondering, you see the Blake Street we've seen a lot on, that 89 Blake, I think we've had before. But do you happen to know anything about it? Dan Farley's here.
Drake, can you see me?
No, I can't. Who's this?
It's Dan Farley.
Oh, Dan, good, you're here. Sorry. Didn't know you were there.
So just, so the very first one I approve. You're okay or no?
Yeah, I can hear you barely.
Okay, hang on. So, the first project that you approved was actually done, it's been done in three phases. The first phase was for roof replacement. The second place, the second phase, was a blown hot water heater. I don't know if you remember that. And then the third phase is the, what you just discussed and approved, for the storm doors, the bulkhead, and that sort of thing. Now, the second project is, they, they, all they did was a title search so far, and then, and then from there, they went to a lead, lead paint abatement process. When they were there, they discovered the asbestos. So you're right, there is more coming. I'm not sure what it is. I haven't seen that as of yet. But the asbestos, asbestos was found during the lead abatement inspection for both of those two projects.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Any further discussion on number three? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, that's three passes. Number four, project number 143-SC1801-11. Vote to authorize project approval to Alberta Construction Company of Manchester, Connecticut, for $3,950 for asbestos abatement at 31 Willow Street, pending City Council approval. By the way, same company, same price as the last one. Okay. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Did you make the motion? Yes, you did. All right, I'll second. Any discussion? I think it's the same as the other. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're good with that. And number five, business by members. Vote to consider business by members. I have one thing. This is for Dan. I, my late neighbor's house I saw sold. We gave that a roofing project a couple of years ago. Did we get that money back?
Yes, we did. It's gone back into our program income account. So we have to, that, those funds that come back to us, is put in what we call program income account. And those funds have to be utilized and spent on these projects before we use the grant money.
Sure. Okay. But that's what it's all about. We get our money back, you know, eventually, and we use it again. So, beautiful. Okay, that's it from me. Anybody else? Carrie? Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay, Carrie, second by me, and we are adjourned. Yeah. All right, is Heather there?
She's here.
Do I have to log out and then log back in?
No, same link, I guess. Yeah, you're good.
Or do I just stay on?
Yeah, you just stay on.
Okay. Okay, are we still recording?
What's that, Drake?
Are we still recording?
I, yes, we are.
So I'm gonna go ahead and start the regular, no, first we'll start the Board of Trustees meeting. For the record, today is Monday, August 1st, 2022. We are holding this meeting in the auditorium. And by Zoom, this is a hybrid meeting. Attending in person here in the auditorium, I have Councilwoman Hona, Councilman Manisha, Councilwoman Ruette, representing the council. We have Councilman David Oliver, and I think a Councilman Cavanaro is on the call. Also participating and representing the Board of Safety, I have Commissioner McLeod. Commissioner Coxwell. Commissioner Battle is attending here in person and representing the unions this evening. I have Mr. Towsy, Mr. Cody, and the Fire Department. We have Battalion Chief, is it Battalion Chief? Yes, Sterling, thank you. What else do we have in the Fire Department? I see in the Police Department, we have Nick Littary. And I think that constitutes, and James Foley. That constitutes a quorum, I'm sorry. Treasurer Dan Furley and myself are also members of the Board of Trustees. So we have a quorum of the boards, and I'll, at this time, ask the boards to kindly stand, pledge the flag, and then we can start the business.
The United States of America, the two republics for which it stands, one nation under the gun, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So item number one on the agenda this evening is a, I would entertain a motion by the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund. I guess we're gonna do this jointly. The way the, the way the motion reads, both the Board of Trustees for the City Employment Retirement Fund and the Police and Fire Pension Fund to approve the minutes of the regular joint meeting, which was held on February 7th, 2022. Do I have a motion? Everybody is game. Thank you. I heard Councilman Manisha and Council and Commissioner Battle. Are there questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. You know, when I called off attendance, I don't, did I mention that, that Councilman Waldron?
I don't think you mentioned.
No.
I didn't. So for the record, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that Councilman Waldron is also on the call. Thank you. Item two. And this agenda this evening is a presentation for both the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund and the City Employees Retirement Fund. And we have fiduciary advisors, Anthony Trainiezzi here, participating via Zoom as well. Oh, there he is. Hi, Tony. Right, the stage is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I will ship, my intention is to share my screen and to walk through our June 30th second quarter report in summary fashion, review the markets in the portfolios, and then to provide an update through the close of business on Friday, the, the end of the month of July, which will also be a good place to summarize some modest recommendations for changes that we have. Does that sound like a good plan?
Sounds good.
Great, thanks. So I will share my screen now. And I'll walk through this report, which I know was emailed out, I think, to the group today. So if there are any questions after the fact, please feel free to reach out to me. Again, as I said, I'll hit this in summary fashion. In our report, we include obviously the, the regular review of the portfolio, but we also have a, a section of each of the full detailed report called the Governance Calendar. This quarter's governance calendar is focused on the investment policy statement. So I point this out on page six of our report. We have elements of a well-written investment policy statement listed here. Your policy includes all of the pertinent elements, we think. And the policy statement for the employee plan and then the police and fire plan are both in here. They were last approved in 2015. From our perspective, as we review them on a regular basis, we think they're still in good standing and have no recommendations for change. But we think it's a good exercise to have the, the fiduciaries of the plan review these on a regular basis. So we'll have it in the report once a year, and happy to answer any questions, if there are any now or after the fact related to the policy statements. One, one note I will make at the very, the very last page, Appendix A of both of the documents, lists the asset allocation. And while the, the document and the text has not changed since 2015 in terms of the objectives of the portfolio, the roles and responsibilities of the various parties, the process by which the portfolio is monitored, all stay the same. The target asset allocation obviously has changed over time. And so we memorialize that. The most recent change was just this past February, when you all approved the new targets that are listed here. So what we've done historically is just update the appendix and note the date of the change at the top of it, but keep the overall document intact. And that's the same case here for the, for the police and fire plan. So I'll jump through that, and unless there are any questions, and we'll spend a couple of minutes on broad markets. So the first six months of this calendar year, which are the second six months of your fiscal year, proved to be very difficult after a very strong 2021, and, and really 18 or 20 months since the, the market's bottomed with the COVID sell-off back in early 2020. So we've seen capital markets exhibiting high volatility. We've seen a sharp sell-off, and really, all segments of the market equities have sold off. Fixed income has also sold off quite a bit, led by the, the Fed's hawkish stance and with, with rates rising, when, when rates, when interest rates go up, bond prices come down. So that's actually a unique environment. We haven't seen very many times where bonds and stocks both go down at the same time. But that's actually been the case that's occurred for the first six months of this year. Lots of concern and discussion about whether or not we're in a recession. We had the second straight quarter of negative GDP growth reported just last week. A lot of people view that two straight quarters as a recession. Technically, the recession, a recession is not just that simple calculation in the one facet of, of the economy that doesn't seem to jive with, with what, what usually goes with the recession is that the job market is fairly strong, unemployment is very low historically. We'll get a jobs report later this week, and we'll see if there's some soft, softening on that front as well. But nonetheless, very difficult environment, and inflation obviously has been an important and a headline factor as well. So if we jump ahead and, and here to slide 29, and I'll just talk a little bit about how, or quantify a little bit how, how poorly markets have done so far this year. You can see this on this page, the top half of the slide, where the bar charts are. What, what's represented on this page is the bars show the returns for the first six months of the year for the various indexes or market segments that are listed at the bottom of the graphic. And the numbers in the circle are the returns for the second quarter of the year. So I'll take, point you to the third, third bar here, core bonds. That's the aggregate bond index widely viewed as a broad proxy for investment-grade bonds in the United States, both treasury and corporate, and, and, and investment-grade credit as well. Down 10.3% this year, 4.7 of that 10.3% happened in the second quarter. So a very sharp decline in fixed income. Down double digits in six months. That's, that's a magnitude of, of poor performance out of bonds that we haven't seen in quite some time, as we've been on a 30-something-year stretch from the early 80s to date, where interest rates have, have gradually come down. And, and now, you know, finally beginning to tick up. In the middle part of the page, the, these gray bars are equities. And you'll see down in the high teens to low 20s, depending on which segment you look at. So international stocks actually held up a little bit better than US stocks did in the first six months of the year, but not by much. And small-cap stocks were the worst place to be, down 23.4% for the first six months of the year. So as you look at this graph, you'll notice really all of the bars are negative with one exception, which is commodities, up 18.4%. Most of that happened in the first part of the year when energy prices spiked up. But really, other commodities have also increased with, with inflation concerns. And as oil and energy have moved up, we've seen the commodity index, which is, which is heavily weighted towards energy, produce a positive return. So really, no place to hide in broad markets for the first half of this year. And that's coming off an 18- or 20-month stretch where we had really robust returns. You know, just a couple of quarters ago, when we met and looked at the year-end results, we were talking about very robust figures. As we know, markets tend to be volatile. It's not a smooth line, especially to try to achieve expected returns that align with, with those of pension plans like yours. And so being exposed to the markets, no, we're, we're fully aware we're gonna have environments like this one. And the portfolio is diversified, number one, to help protect in, on, in environments like this. But also the process that, that you followed for many years has been one where you stay exposed, you rebalance the portfolio back into the underperforming classes. And over time, we do see markets rebound, and the portfolios participate, and ultimately, over the long run, produce the desired outcome. So that played out in the financial crisis in '08, '09. It, it played out in the COVID sell-off just a couple of years ago. And, and we expect that to be the, the same story here. The, the amount of time, right, is the, the uncertain aspect. And that's why we're not preaching to get overly exposed to risk assets or return-seeking assets in the portfolio, but to stick to that long-term target that we just revisited a few months ago and re-underwrote as being appropriate for, for your objectives. One, one more point to make here, and then I'll jump and we'll look right at the portfolios. I talked about interest rates rising. In the top left-hand part of this slide, you see three different lines. Each line represents our, what we call a yield curve. So it's the yield on different maturity treasury bonds issued by the US government at a specific point in time. And the numbers you see here are the, specifically the 10-year. But if you go farther to the left, you can see the one-year, and even lower than that, and further to the right, it goes out to 30 years. But I'll point you to the 10-year, just to give you a, a, put, put, put some numbers and, and give you a sense of the magnitude of how much rates have moved. A year ago, this past June, so June of 2021, in this yellow line, the 10-year Treasury was yielding 1.45%. So if you bought a 10-year Treasury bond, you'd get a coupon of 1.45% every year for 10 years, and then you receive your principal back at the end. If you bought a, a 10-year Treasury on March 31st of this year, it would have been, it would have jumped up to 2.32%. And then at June 30th of this year, it was at just about 3%. So a little more than double where it was just a year ago, up about 150 basis points. In historic terms, 3% is not very high when you look at the 10-year, but it's high compared to what we've seen in the recent past, and it's dramatically higher than where it was just a couple of quarters ago. So that sharp move in a short period of time, the 10-year yield doubling, is kind of the explanation for why we've seen fixed income market values sell off, and that index was down about 10%. Any questions on broad markets before I jump and look at the portfolios?
I don't see any around the room.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. So page 35 shows a snapshot of the employee pension plan. It finished the month of June and the fiscal year with a market value of about $40.7 million. The asset allocation is relatively close to the target. So we show you the target allocation, the actual allocation, excuse me, next to the target, and then the final column is the difference between the two. If you scan your eye down that difference, you'll notice that we're pretty close to target across all segments, and that's purposeful, as we've rebalanced the portfolio earlier this year. And then we use any cash flows, contributions, or withdrawals as a means of, of kind of naturally rebalancing the portfolio as well. And, and so that's purposeful, as I said, to make sure that the portfolio is exposed, but not overly explode, exposed to the return-seeking or more risky segments of the broad markets. Police and Fire, the same story and the same process. So it finished the, the fiscal year with a market value of about $66.5 million, spread out across the same mix of managers with the same target as the, as the return objectives are identical for the two plans. Right at the top of the next page here, page 37, you can see the returns of the employee plan, and then below that, the police and fire plan. Any subtle differences in returns are just due to the timing of cash flows. So the returns are very, very close to each other. For the, for the quarter, the, excuse me, the second calendar quarter of this year, the two plans were down about 11%. And for the year-to-date, so January 1st through June 30th, down about 16%. The returns, while, while negative, obviously, did protect a little bit compared to their blended benchmark in the quarter by about a percent, and for the year-to-date, by a little more than a quarter of a percent. So we're seeing the collection of managers offer some modest protection in a challenging environment. But as you can see from these absolute returns, an environment where there really was no place to hide, as I said before. I'll point out a couple of things on managers, though I think that are, that are, is relative good news and, and presents itself for good positioning moving forward. One is the decision in early '21 to add the BlackRock Strategic Income Fund, and then earlier this year to increase the weight, has proven to be helpful. The flexibility of this mandate, you may recall from the last presentation a handful of months ago, was, was the appeal that, that suggested to us to recommend increasing the weighting in the portfolio, because that flexibility allows this manager to protect in a rising rate environment in a way that most bond funds don't, 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 or won't do. And so you see that reflected in their returns, still negative, but it was down about 5.5% in an environment, again, where the, the core bond index was down a little over 10. So that proved to, to be somewhat beneficial, again, in relative terms. And if we can, you know, we, nobody likes reporting negative returns like this, but if the portfolio can protect a little bit in these down markets compared to the broad index, that's less work to do to make up to get back to where we started. And so that's kind of the, the, the gist of, of why the collection of managers are put together the way they are compared to the broad indexes that the portfolio is measured against. In the port, in the equity portion of the portfolio, we show you the mix of managers. Interesting to point out, we've talked a lot over the last number of years about how your growth manager and the growth style in general has really outperformed value. Well, the good news for value investors is we've seen value play an important role in, in protecting in this market sell-off, and you can see that reflected here. Again, terrible absolute numbers, but, but in, value is down about 13 when growth was down close to 30%. So really, a dramatic difference there, and being diversified across, across both segments helped provide some protection. And finally, in your small cap in the US, you see a fair amount of protection from that Boston Trust Small Cap Fund that we've talked a little bit about over the years. It has a very high-quality bias to the names that they buy, meaning they don't buy speculative small-cap companies where, where there's a lot of speculative names that don't have earnings or have, you know, highly-levered balance sheets. Oftentimes, when markets are running up like they did in the first half of the COVID rebound, these names underperform mark, the broad indexes. But in environments like this one, they protect quite meaningfully. So over the last 12 months, the small-cap index is down 25%, and this fund is down 6%. So, you know, really earning its, earning its place in the portfolio and doing what we would have expected it to do in the environment that we're in today. Your international managers, there's three of them, two at the bottom of this page. We do have a recommendation, and that recommendation is centered on replacing the Artisan International Fund. You can see that reflected on the far right and the bottom of the page, where we rec, where we note the status is terminate. Obviously, that means we're recommending to, to remove it from the portfolio. In the back of the report, there's a search report that shows a number of candidates to replace the Artisan Fund, which is a growth-oriented, non-US equity manager. Our recommendation is to use the Harding Lovner International Fund. We like it, the way it complements the Dodge and Cox Fund, which you have on the value side here. And the combination of those two funds, we think, would work nicely. The Harding Lovner Fund has a strong track record with a stable management team. It also has a more appealing fee or expense ratio that it carries. The expense ratio is 0.71 compared to the Artisan Fund, which is over 0.9%. So I'll show you that in a little more detail in a minute, but just wanted to mention it here because you, you see the terminate recommendation. And then the last piece of the portfolio is about a 5% weight, which is, it's called principal diversified real assets. That's the fund that's exposed to commodities and other resources with an eye towards protecting the portfolio in an inflationary environment. Remember, we haven't had much, much inflation to speak of up until very recently. But this, so far this year, when equities are down in the 20% range, bonds are down 10. The commodity, or this real asset fund is down 4.8. And over the last year, it's up 1.1% in an environment where just about everything else is down. So again, offering diversification in the broad context of the overall portfolio, helping to protect in, in the challenging environment and keeping the portfolio positioned to participate when we do see markets begin to, begin to rebound. Any questions on markets or the broad portfolio before I should pull up a different report to show you the current allocation through Friday night's close and our recommendations?
Not seeing any questions.
Okay, great. I will just pivot my screen, and I'll start, let me flip back. I'll start here, actually. Probably easiest if I do that. So I hope you can see that. Couple of points that I want to draw here. So busy page. This shows you all of your investments on the left-hand side. The second column is the market value on, as of the end of the month of July. And if you scan your eye down to the bottom, the, you'll notice that the employee plan is $42.7 million. That's an increase of about $2, $2 million since the end of June. That's an increase of about two two million dollars since the end of June. Uh and that does not include uh the the town uh the city contribution uh that is going to be made. So that two million dollars represents roughly a five percent increase just in the month of July, as we saw markets really in kind of mid to late June begin to rebound in the last five or six weeks have been much more favorable. So we so we're have we haven't recaptured. Uh there's still a long way to go to recapture what was lost in the first six months of the year, but but the last six weeks have have been quite helpful. The police and fire plan, the magnitude uh is is similar. Um I'll just move. It's it's at nearly seventy million, sixty nine point seven million dollars to end the the month of July. And again, a similar about a five percent increase from where it was just a month ago. Uh so that speaks to, right, um it's hard to tell when the markets are going to give you the strong performance. So a- as opposed to say, let's move to the sidelines, wait till things feel better, and then we'll get back in. If you if you take that approach, you know, that's market timing. It's very difficult. I don't think there's anybody that can do it repeatedly successfully. So having the longer term strategic approach has you um in place, and you get to participate in in the rebounds that occur like like what's happened in the last few weeks.
Hey, Tony, excuse me.
Sure.
I lost you. Can you tell me what page you're on there?
Yep, Dan, I'm sorry. So this is a page that you don't have in your report.
Oh, no wonder.
Yeah, I did email it to you, Dan, but just probably fifteen minutes before the meeting started. Uh so I apologize for the late um inclusion.
No problem.
We were compiling the report today, uh obviously through last night's close. So I'll and I'll be happy to send that out to the broader group as well, of course.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing that we reflect here on these on both of these pages is um the replacement of Artisan with the Harding Lovner Fund. So we're proposing to um uh fully, fully uh uh liquidate the Artisan Fund and invest the proceeds, the hundred percent of those proceeds into Harding Lovner. They're both in the same asset class, so that would keep the portfolio intact. It's just a change of manager, not a change of broad asset allocation. So that's recommendation number one that we have, and then number two that we have, Dan was kind enough to reach out and inform us of the contributions that will be uh that will be um made into each of the plans, two hundred and twenty thousand into the employee pa- plan and three point two million dollars into the police and fire plan. We would propose to allocate those to um and and it's reflected on these pages here if we were to do it today, but to rebalance the portfolio back to target, so allocate it across the various mandates to keep the overall asset mix in place. Obviously, the contribution to the police and fire plan is larger, so I'll I'll flip to that page. And you can see w- with three point two million dollars uh a relatively sizable weight, so we sprinkle that across many of the mandates so that the end result is the asset allocation uh is aligned with those targets or very close to it. Uh the the employee plan, the two hundred and twenty thousand uh isn't nearly as large a portion of the relative overall piece. So that gets uh just just split out into a couple of the mandates. So I said an awful lot there. Is there is there any clarification or any questions that I can that I can answer?
Questions for Tony?
Just a comment, Mayor. So Tony, just to follow up, so uh everyone on the board understands that those city contributions um that Tony just spoke about will be made uh by the end of this week or the beginning of the next will be added to those funds.
And those are the funds that were budgeted uh in our fiscal year operating budget. All right, I guess no other questions or comments. Give us Tony. Right. So that is that the conclusion of the um report?
It is, Mayor.
Okay, all right. So then I'm going to move into the action items that you're recommending. And um I know I feel like I've been flipping through the pages a little bit. I just wanted to make sure that the recommendation that you're proposing applies to both police and fire pension and the city employees. So um with that said, um I will entertain a motion. This would be now item number three on the agenda. Uh Board of Trustees, those members of the Board of Trustees for the Police and Fire. Um I will entertain a motion to approve the recommended recommended changes, which is to terminate Artisan International and replace it with Harding Lovner International uh as uh recommended by fiduciary advisors uh for Police and Fire Pension Fund. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
I'll second it.
Okay, so actually, police and fire, um I hold that motion, um Councilman Oliver, thank you. So um that's right. I have a motion made by Battalion Chief Sterling and a second by Commissioner Battle. Uh are there questions or comments on that motion? Hearing none. The Board of Trustees, these are the Board of Safety Members, Police and Fire. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Right now to the council members uh and city employee representatives, uh pension representatives. I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommended changes. Again, that is to terminate Artisan International and replace it with Harding Lovner uh International um as presented by fiduciary advisors. Do I have a motion? Thank you. Uh I have a motion from uh Mr. Tausi with a second by Mr. uh Councilman Oliver. Questions on that motion? Hearing hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, I don't know that it's necessary for us to actually take a motion on the contributions that will be made and um and um allocated. That's just standard operating procedure when you get those correct, Tony.
That's right.
Okay, good. All right. Good. Um all right, that concludes the fiduciant portion of the agenda. I'll move into, I guess I can let you sign off if you wanted to now, Tony, unless there are any questions before we ask. Before we let him exit the room.
Okay, I do have one. So what do you think our positioning is right? For going forward, how do you think we're um situated?
So uh as far as the um pension funding is concerned, I think um pages uh I hate flipping through these pages in front of everybody. Um early in the report, the city employees um pension is funded somewhere around, is it ninety one percent funded, Tony?
Yeah, uh yes.
And that was as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty one, correct?
I'll give you, that's right, the last, right, a year ago, the last uh Val report. Um I'll get you the page, pages twenty five and twenty six.
Thank you. So yeah, the um so city employees um fund is about ninety one point three thirty seven percent. Again, that was June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. Hooker Holcomb usually provides a actuar- actuarial, I don't know why I can't talk today, uh valuation report. Uh we will be bringing them in to do an updated on report. And the Police and Fire Pension Fund, as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty one, uh the funded ratio was uh seventy one point seventy one percent. So still work to do to fund those. Other questions before we bid adieu to Mr. Tringizi? All right. Moving to item number five. Thank you very much, Tony. Appreciate your your presentation and advice. Item five on the agenda. Uh this is uh for members um of the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund. Those are the city council members uh and our city employee representatives. Uh I will entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective April thirtieth, twenty twenty two for Brenda Reggino Senior Account Clerk for the City of Torrington Finance Department after twenty one years of service. I'll move it. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
Uh second by Councilman Oliver. Are there questions on the calculation? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, still with the uh city employees uh retirement fund. Entertainer motion to accept the pension computation effective May twelfth, twenty twenty two for Lynn Florio, Senior Account Clerk for the City of Torrington City Clerk's Department after fifteen years of service. So thank you, Councilwoman Hona. And second by Councilman Manitia. Uh questions on the calculation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Item seven. I'll entertain a motion uh by the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund Management Resolution. This is the city council members only. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective April twenty third, twenty twenty two for Albert Vasco Corporation Council for the City of Torrington after sixteen years of service. I'm sorry, Al Vasco left city service a number of years ago, um but he is now just applying and applying for his pension. Uh so do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manitia. Are there questions on the calculation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, still with the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund, asked me counsel for local twenty two twelve Public Works employees. I will entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March sixteenth, twenty twenty two for John E. Gadensey, Public Works Maintainer Two for the City of Torrington Public Works Department after fourteen years of service. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona, and second by Councilwoman Rowett. Are there questions on the calculation? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, moving on to the Police and Firemen's Pension Fund. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty two for Jennifer Hayes, Patrolman A for the City of Torrington Police Department uh after fifteen point one two years of service. Yeah, this one I need our Board of Safety members and our police and fire.
So move.
Second, Mayor.
Well, I I heard a second. So the motion made by Commissioner Battle, seconded by Commissioner McLeod. Uh I'll call, uh if there are no questions on the computation, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you. On item ten, again, Board of Safety Members and uh public safety members. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March twenty seventh, twenty twenty two for James Kreen, Detective for the City of Torrington Police Department after twenty five point zero two years of service.
So move.
Second.
I I heard Commissioner McLeod, and I heard a second from Commissioner Battle. Are there questions on the calculation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective July third, twenty twenty two for Keith Diblaine, Detective for the City of Torrington Police Department after twenty three point zero one years of service.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Battle.
Second.
And second by Commissioner McLeod. Questions on the calculation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. There being no further business before the Board of Trustees, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
I think I heard, I heard Councilwoman Hona, I heard Councilman Manitia, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Okay. So then let's go into um at this point, um the city council regular meeting, I'll call it a order. Uh for the record, it is now seven oh eight P.M. It is still Monday, August first, two thousand twenty two. Um and again, for the record, participating in person. I hear the auditorium is Councilwoman Hona, Councilwoman Manitia, Councilwoman Rowett, participating via Zoom. I have Councilwoman Waldron, Councilman Kevin Arrow, and Councilman Oliver. Uh so jumping right into item number one. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with section four B of the City Council N W P C A Meeting Rules of Procedure. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona. And second by Councilwoman Manitia. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public, uh members of the public that wish to address, uh Mr. Kingdom.
Tom Kandifer, eighteen twenty one, Winston Road. The uh cannabis statute has been revised once already in a significant way. I believe it needs uh more uh revisions. And so so it makes it, you know, makes it uh it's going to achieve its goals, and it's going to uh be some some make some sort of a positive contribution to communities all over Connecticut. And what I'm recommending is that the should the city should take issue with Hartford, both executive and legislative branches on 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 several uh several topics. Uh you can you can still continue your uh uh efforts to uh develop uh your zoning regulations. But I'll give you some examples of things that uh are problems for me. This social equity, there's there's a whole big uh the whole statute is kind of geared to uh to get folks exclusively into the cannabis industry. And uh and that may only impact uh uh a small number of uh of people. Uh my thought is if you're gonna if the whole the whole this social equity thing, why not uh use those monies collected to benefit a greater segment of the population, for example, like uh say say the uh the number, the people that consume uh marijuana are even if even if those the number of them tripled, you probably still got seventy percent of the population who doesn't care for that. So why not get a get a get a uh a uh greater diversity of uh businesses and jobs, you know, that's going to be benefit uh you know, a greater part of the communities. Now, the statute proposes to help eliminate the unregulated market. Not likely. With the uh excessive fees and taxes, Connecticut may not may not even be competitive with the bordering states. The uh and uh you know, the these successful applicants, they're uh is they're going to want to just pass along a- all these fees uh they're going to want to just pass along all these fees and expenses onto, onto the end user. Now, a third, a third issue is relates to these cultivators, which are intense energy users. One estimate says they, they use ten times the equivalent, ten times an office building of equivalent size. And the statute only says, well, we strongly recommend the use of, use of renewables. I think they should, you know, put something in there that should phase it in over a period of years, you know, that you should, you should certainly definitely use renewables because, you know, what's going to happen? You, you've got, right now, the there's sixteen social equity cultivated applicants that are looking for space and and that's, you know, in addition to other, those micro cultivators who eventually will be coming online. So it would make sense that, you know, if we're to, you know, if we want sustainable towns, you know, there should be an effort to control energy consumption. I'm going to stop it there. The I have more, I have more things of concern, but if the city is interested to pursue that further, I can always, I can, you know, you can come up with your own ideas. I mean, it's just, it's just a thought that we have time, there's nothing, you know, we got the mortuary in town still on and nobody's, nobody's purchased a single milligram of recreational cannabis yet in Connecticut legally. And while at the same time, the state has collected almost eleven million of in the licensed lottery that they conducted. So you know, the role, you know, they talk about this rollout of the, of the cannabis thing, maybe by the end of the year possibly. But I think by the time the, it's really, it really goes forward. It's going to be into, well, into next year. So we've got a period of time, if you're interested in doing a little pushback to Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kandifer. So open to the public for comment if there are additional comments. All right, move into item two. I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. I heard a second from Councilman Manitia. Are there questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special meeting minutes from July twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow. I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona. Questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
And so for the record, I have two abstentions. That would be Councilman Waldron and Councilman Manitia. We'll move into item number three. I'll entertain a motion to accept Emily Jury as a regular member of the Inland Wetlands Commission with a term set to expire September fourth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. And a second from Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, this is a presentation with a potential vote. So for discussion purposes, I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the M S W Recycling Coordinator and the Public Works Director to enter into a contract for a one-year pilot program with I Recycle of Waterbury, Connecticut at no cost to the city. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manitia. And we have here this evening with us, obviously, Public Works Director Ray True and our representative from I Recycle.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So several months ago, probably maybe back in April, March, April, Mike Stallings, the President of I Recycle Process, about a program to give our residents an option for redeemable bottles and cans. With the thought process that, you know, I mean, how many of us like to fill them machines and machines and fill the machines? So, you know, so we thought, wow, okay, well, let's take a look at this, what this program, you know, looks like and, you know, what options the residents might have for redeeming is one, the, for the residents to get a portion of that five cents back, but also to get that, the redeemable bottles and cans out of our recycling and recycle it a different way. And therefore saving the city on the cost of the tonnage of recycling. So that's kind of, so over the last several months, like I had said, we've been working, mostly Linda has been working, unfortunately, she's going to be here tonight. But so I wanted to kind of introduce you to Mike Stallings, President of I Recycle, so he can give you a kind of an overview and talk about his program and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ray.
Hello, everyone. So again, Mike Stallings. And I do, I own I Recycle. I started I Recycle, I want to say a little bit before COVID. I kind of date everything pre-COVID, post-COVID. But right before, right before COVID, you know, we were thinking about this whole, because I Recycle is a redemption center. Let's just start there. It's a redemption center with an innovative twist. So it's a curbside pickup, you know, us Americans love our curbside. And so I said, hey, well, most folks don't like to go to, as Ray mentioned, putting your bottles in one by one, and then they're spitting them out and you're stepping on sticky stuff and your shoes don't come up off the ground. Most people don't like that. I know I did it. So I was like, well, how do we make recycling attractive and convenient for the end user? And we came up with this idea of doing a pickup at curbside at people's homes. And basically, obviously, we don't charge, but we do take part of the, the proceeds. So if someone had ten dollars of cans and bottles for the, the week or the month, we would take five, they would take five. So it would look like that. And, and that's really what we do is we come in, anything redeemable in Connecticut, which means anything that's worth five cents, that can be plastic, it can be aluminum, and it can be glass, we will take that bottle back. So it doesn't necessarily mean if you have a Walmart bottle, we won't take a Walmart, but we'll literally take anything that's redeemable in Connecticut. Unlike if you went into the grocery stores or some places that, or some other redemption centers where it's like, hey, you can only bring two hundred bags. We take everything. How it helps the city is it really helps because, one, it's basically conditioning people to say, hey, listen, I have a convenience, I have an outlet to recycle. So, and it may not work for everyone, but it will give them that outlet to say, hey, we, we can recycle. And it's an easier way to do it. So get some of that garbage either out of the landfills, off the streets to help beautify Torrington and Connecticut. And then as well as, you know, kind of helping the youth out with, you know, I guess, like future, future growth when it comes to sustainability. So that's I Recycle in a nutshell. There are so many other little small things, I think, where it, again, helps the city as well as with glass, right? So beer bottles are heavy. We don't take liquor bottles or wine bottles back yet. That's part of the goal. One cool thing we were working on today is buying twenty-four acres of land in Waterbury so that we can get there. So that's in the process now. So some really cool things coming up, but this first step in this first pilot program is really to start pushing that recycling piece, that recycling component, so that people are conditioned, we have created a behavior so that they are now recycling in a different behavior, in a different stance, like not just throwing it into your trash or throwing it into one of your bins and saying, I recycle. It's like, hey, I'm getting paid for this. Someone's going to give me something back. So there are incentives behind it. And, you know, as, as human beings, we do like our incentives, intrinsic and extrinsic. And this is just the extrinsic reward that we can give back.
Thank you, Michael. I just, I, I met with Michael and Ray and Linda, I think it was in April. It was much earlier. And I was intrigued because I had read about his business in the Waterbury Republican American. And it interested me because in my house, I think we're a little guilty of putting those redeemable bottles in our regular recycle bin, which is still making its way to a trash landfill somewhere. But I was particularly interested because you have been doing this already with memberships with businesses, restaurants, and I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that?
So we work with, so I started B two B, because I do, it would just be a little bit easier to control and to get a better understanding. So I reached out and we work with the Excel Center, the Xfinity Center, the Hilton Hotel, the Marriott's Connecticut Convention Center, and just like a slew of restaurants throughout Connecticut. And we do the same thing. So we go, we pick up weekly and we pay them back half of what we get. Everyone's happy. And again, like you mentioned, it doesn't, our recycling does not go back into the landfill. Our recycling literally gets picked up, picked up by a distributor and it's, it gets mailed and shipped out to different parts of the world, sold back as plastic, aluminum, or glass. So that's, that's the main difference is what we kind of do is we really just take it out of that landfill space and recycle it. But yeah, we're working with a ton of different businesses throughout Connecticut and, and just rapidly growing.
Thank you. So floor is open for questions. Councilman Manitia.
How, how would that look for individual homeowners in a city versus, you know, like a Hilton Hotel and things like that?
Yeah. So the same, it would sort of look the same, right? So if we were picking up, let's just say Wednesday, you're going to say, hey, we're going to pick up for you every Wednesday. It would be every Wednesday between twelve and eight P M. And you would leave your, your bottles curbside. We have bins, we provide bins. Some folks on the purchase are bins, they do have bins. But we do have bins that you can put them in or you can leave them on the curb. We recommend that you keep an eye on your bottles because it's bags of money, literally. So we do recommend that, but that's what it looks like. So it's scheduled out. And you just put your bags out and we pick them up and then you get paid in the rear. So basically, like a month later, we pay you back.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So you said you're rapidly growing. How many employees do you have?
Right now, we have eight employees and two coming on actually next week.
It seems like, are you doing these presentations in other cities?
I am. Yeah.
Nagatuck.
Yeah, so Nagatuck, Waterbury, and New Haven is, we're in talks with New Haven right now as well.
So you're in talks with New Haven. Is Waterbury or Nagatuck accepted?
Yeah, Nagatuck is like onboard. Waterbury is in pursuit. We're actually doing things in Waterbury, piloting programs. I'm having the okay from the mayor there. So we're kind of just small pockets with different neighborhoods there as well.
Other questions? And I would only add, you know, as a pilot, this is an opportunity for us to test drive this, you know, and make adjustments as we need to before there's a long-term commitment for either I Recycle's part or the city's part.
Another question, I think I read in the, in the, in the agreement that you'd be proposing that the city would not stop you from doing whatever publicizing you want to do, but then we would be publicizing it, it says in the normal course or something. Maybe it's a question for you, Mayor. I don't, do we have a thought on how we would get this information out to the public? Seems like it could be a heavy lift to get that.
Yeah. So I mean, I think that a good marketing approach would obviously be, you know, throwing something back into the newspaper where we're getting endorsed by you guys saying, hey, let's do this. Maybe some pictures taken and things like that. As well as some social media platforms, because, you know, that's just where we are today. So Instagram, Facebook ads. That's, that's really where I do now. It's like a lot of Instagram and Facebook ads. And we get, we definitely get a good traction from that as well.
You know, and this is a situation, I think, where if we're going to, if we're going to target a pilot area, direct mail notification wouldn't be too costly. And I think not out of the question. And our Torrington alerts, I know that that hasn't really taken off the way that we want it to. But every time we have an opportunity to do direct mailing, putting inserts in everybody's tax bills, these are ways for us to be able to communicate with those impacted neighborhoods and build the capacity because it's our goal to build this capacity and do what we can to reduce our solid waste. Ray, we're paying in excess of ninety dollars a ton right now. Is it, is it ninety?
It's a hundred and five dollars a ton.
So it's well in excess of ninety dollars a ton. And I can't put a weight to what we think we can pull out of that stream with I Recycle. But I sure would like to do my best to figure that out.
And we'll have those numbers. As we're collecting, we'll have those numbers and provide data as well. And as I said, one of the goals for us is to really start collecting all glass as, once we move into our larger facility. So that's, this is just a step in the soul. It's something that can really be great.
Other questions from the council? I can't tell on the screen.
Mayor Paul Kevin Arrow, I have some.
Yes, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Have there been any problems with poachers, people poaching these? In other words, you're putting what is essentially something that's worth some money and there are a lot of homeless people, right, who also are utilizing this same sort of resource? Have you had any problems with those people knowing that there's going to be now more centralized areas where they can just collect these and use them themselves?
Not yet. But, but that is an issue, right? And, and that's something that we can work to work through together. You know, we talked about bins with locks on them. We also, you know, on all our, our marketing material, you know, keep an eye on your, on your material because again, like you said, it's literally cash in a bag. You know, someone can come and pull it away very fast. But that's not what we want to, we, we don't want those folks to deter us from doing something good for Mother Earth and, you know, sustainability. So you know, on our end and on the end users' end, we just need to keep pushing forward to do what needs to be done.
Okay. And my second question, Mayor. Assuming that it's going to do, do you actually, at curbside, do you go through the bins themselves or however these are going to be left for you to sort out what you actually want, leaving behind those that don't, aren't actually technically recyclable materials? Do those go behind?
Right. No, that, good question. No, we, we don't go through U S A Recycling's bins because those are proprietary to the U S A Recycling. However, if we had our bins, they would definitely, you know, just take our bags out of the bin. So we only take bags. And we do have, we do have a sign up and within that sign up, we tell folks like how to bag things and where to bag them. And so basically all the requirements. So that we're not picking through bags because we don't want garbage. This is just pure redeemable bottles and cans. We want to keep it clean. And we're, we're really just reeducating folks on how to recycle.
Okay. That's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah. And if I might just add to that response, I, I see this somewhat in the similar, similar vein that simple recycle occurred, where there's a separate pickup, a separate bag that is designed strictly and solely for those redeemable bottles. I think that, Michael, is correct. It's about educating the public as to what to put in there. Obviously, if I put ten bottles in the bag and only five of them qualify for the redemption, then I'm only going to get a return on the five. I'm not getting a return on anything else. So it really wouldn't in, in your, to anybody's benefit to put in more than, you know, what they could possibly get.
Exactly. Exactly. Because at that point, it would just be trash.
Yes. Sure.
I did just see an website. So you can buy the bags for fifty cents, but if we did this, you would provide them to the people who sign up or?
No, they would still need to buy them.
They would buy bags for fifty cents and then how many?
So in our bags, about two hundred and twenty. So it's eleven dollar bag. So that's a good sized bag. So if you, you know, when you buy a fifty cent bag, it's going to hold eleven dollars worth of cans and bottles.
And four, I don't want to tell anybody's story, but I do know that there are some people that do just hold on to those redeemable bottles for a really long time. And they keep collecting them in a garbage bag in their basement. And then when they're ready, they put them out at curbside. So I, I suspect this is going to be more of that model versus the every week you're going to find two or three of these up.
Right. Yeah, I mean, every week. Yeah, I mean, every week I wouldn't imagine, imagine that everyone has eleven dollars worth of cans and bottles. More like every other week, once a month. That, that makes sense. Just, just from the Redeeming Redemption Center, you know, where my regulars come in and I get a chance to talk to them and understand what they do. It's, it's more like every other week. And, and some people save more than others. But typically like every other week, we're going to get like a bag or two of bottles and cans.
Other questions, comments? Anything you wanted to add, Ray?
Yeah, just that, you know, in your packet, you, we designated Linda and Mike worked out the pilot areas that we were going to try and focus the first year pilot on. And in the agreement, there's, there's the option if the metrics are proving viable and we could expand the service area or expand it citywide. You know, on a expedited schedule or, you know, continue with this, you know, through the year pilot and then evaluate the metrics and, you know, after the year pilot and see if it, it makes sense for the city and I Recycle to continue the, the agreement.
Okay. If there are no further questions, I know the motion was made for discussion purposes. I will recall or read back into the record the motion and if you're ready to take action. Too many agendas in front of me. All right. So the motion on the floor was a potential vote to accept the recommendation of the MSW Recycling Coordinator and Public Works Director to enter into a contract for a one-year pilot program with I Recycle of Waterbury at no cost to the city. Motion was made by Councilwoman Rowett, seconded by Councilman Manichia. Any other questions on this motion? Then I'll call a motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item five. I'll entertain a motion to utilize state procurement contract number one nine P S X dash zero 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 six to purchase digitization services from Scan Optics LLC of Manchester for conversion of the building department's paper records to a digital environment at an estimated cost of fifty-two thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars as further explained in the building official Kevin Gillette's memo dated July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Do you have a motion? Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. The floor is open for questions. Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation of the Small Cities Committee to authorize project approval to V Nanfido Roofing and Siding Inc. of Meriden, Connecticut for ten thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars for the replacement of the front and rear storm doors, the basement bulkhead and hatchway doors, replaced windows, wallboard repairs, electrical and lead-based paint mitigation at eighty-nine Blank Street.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Hona. Questions? And I'll defer to the Small Cities Committee.
Okay, the Small Cities Committee met beforehand for the, the next three items, number six, seven and eight. And this is pretty straightforward. Just a nice project here, helping somebody out in the city. Anyway, Dan Farley was with us for the meeting and gave his approval. So I'd just like to recommend that everybody approve this as well as the next two.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, on recommendation, vote to authorize project approval to Alberca Construction Company of Manchester for three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars for asbestos abatement at forty-two Fifthian Avenue.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. And seconded by Councilwoman Hona. And questions or comments?
Okay, just quick. This one and the next one are just kind of a, a preview of a bigger project. Just normal asbestos concerns have to be done before the full project. So that's it. I'm sure we'll hear more on the rest later.
On those same addresses? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yes. Well, there's just two, same company, same price, but just two different addresses. So we never do a project for just asbestos. There's more to come later. So this is just a preliminary deal. So by law.
Abatement first, more to follow. Got it.
Right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I'll call the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, no, excuse me. Item eight, other recommendations of Small Cities Committee to authorize project approval again to Alberca Construction Manchester again for three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for asbestos abatement at thirty-one Willow Street.
So moved.
I hear it, Councilwoman Hona, seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I will entertain a motion to, I'll entertain a motion by City Council, here in acting as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments from Fund Four-Ninety Sanitary Sewer Capital Program. Actually, just so that we don't have to read all of these, you don't have to listen to me read all of these as listed under agenda item number nine. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Manichia. And if you need a minute to read all of the invoices.
Just a quick question.
Yes, please.
I'm pretty sure. So this is, this work was already done?
Yes, this is.
This is, this is work that was done. We just need to pay them. And the work was satisfactorily done, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? We do have Mr. Tausi from WPCA here if there are questions.
No other questions.
All right. Thank you. Then I'll call the motion. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to utilize state procurement contract number one seven P S X zero zero two four to purchase uniform equipment from New England Uniform LLC of Danbury, Danbury for twenty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy dollars and fifteen cents to be paid for by the twenty-twenty-two JAG Local VCP Grant further explained in Purchasing Agent Penny Zuko's letter dated July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, pending Board of Public Safety approval. I'll move it. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. And seconded by Councilman Cavanaro. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to utilize the state procurement contract one nine six, excuse me, one nine P S X zero two two zero to purchase ammunition for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The estimated budget amount for these purchases is twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. This is further explained in Purchasing Agent Penny Zuko's letter dated July twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, again pending Board of Public Safety approval. Move it. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Seconded by Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report for June twenty-two. Councilwoman Hona, seconded by Councilman Manichia. Questions on the report? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I will entertain a motion to release the sewer use liens in Corporation Council's memo dated August first, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorized tax refunds indicated in a list dated July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two and August first. Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. Councilwoman Hona. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept recommendations of the tax collector and authorized sewer use refunds indicated in a list dated July eighteenth and August first, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Yeah, Councilman Waldron. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the department.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Cavanaro. All in favor? Any opposed? To the room, anything this evening, Mr. Tausi? Anything this evening, Mr. Drew? And to the City Clerk's office? Thank you. Corporation Council's office.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, just want to give a brief report on something that's been pending for a little while. I think the City Council received a letter. I'm looking at the date stamp. It was early July. And it had to do with a, what the writer thought was a growing blight. And it had to do with public displays of profanity. And I'm sure some of us have seen some of the signs that have been hanging on mostly private dwellings. And this person said he would like to propose that the city of Torrington start enforcing the current laws and the books with regard to obscenity and also suggested we change our blight ordinance to perhaps include something along the lines of obscenity as a means of defining blight. The writer also mentioned a couple of statutes, section fifty-three A one ninety-four and fifty-three A one eighty-one. Those are criminal statutes. They're not civil statutes. So I just wanted to briefly give a a position from my office with regard to what we might be able to do or mostly what we can't do in regards to this letter. And I have to give some credit to an intern that's working in my office for myself and for the mayor, Thomas Kalanowski, who is a first-year law student at Quinnipiac Law School, who's been a great help in helping us through the summer and talking about some of these kinds of things. And he's, he's actually provided me with a very nice report with regard to this. I'm not going to read his report, but I want to just, first of all, start with our blight ordinance. Our blight ordinance is is an ordinance that's based on a particular statute which provides certain benchmarks and certain definitions as to what is considered blight. Obscenity is not one of those kinds of blights that we can consider in an ordinance. And I must say before I go very much further that I am personally offended by these signs is probably as well as everybody else in the room. But we do have a, we do have a lot of criminal statutes that are involved. The two that were mentioned are criminal statutes. In order for someone, for those statutes to be enforced, you have to commit a crime. And the crime that is being determined by those statutes is also have a desk, also has a definition of what obscenity is. And unfortunately, that that sign that we're concerned about, those signs that we're concerned about does not fall into an obscenity definition. Obscenity as defined in our criminal statutes is some kind of, some kind of action or demonstration that incites violence, that appeals to prurient interests. On the other hand, the sign that says blank Biden or blank Trump is much the same as saying impeach Trump or impeach Biden. It's just another way of saying some degrading type of word. So the problem besides the enforcement of criminal statutes is the constitution that we hold dear and that is the the fact that most people have, all of us have the rights of free speech. And so if we want to say those kinds of things about our president or about anybody, we have the right to say them unless they appeal to prurient interests or cause violence. So the bottom line, from my point of view, from my office and as I say, with the help of Mr. Kalanowski, is not much that we can do about it. We don't have to like it. We don't have to encourage it. I guess if there's anything that any of us can do as private citizens, we should probably try to do that. The city itself, of course, can regulate signage on city or governmental, government-owned property. But in this particular case, we're talking about signs that are hanging or in front of private properties. And we don't have the luxury of being able to regulate regulate those kinds of things. So just wanted to give a report to the City Council because it was, I think, sent to the City Council in case there is ever any follow-up by the writer. At least you can say that you, that it was brought up at a meeting and we discussed it. So be glad to try to answer any questions.
Other questions?
I think only a comment. And what I was kind of curious about was if we had any control. Because I actually, in addition to this writer, someone else asked me about it quite a while ago. The concern is that it was, some of the signs are very close to elementary schools.
That's right.
Definitely aren't directly through school, which kids might be saying those words on the bus, but you know, it's a habit, sort of gives credence to their language.
There's actually been, there's been cases, court cases on it that where the court says the fact that a child has to turn his head so he can't see the sign is not indicative of obscenity. So I mean, you're absolutely right. I agree with you.
Thank you for looking into it. I had to Google curiance. I didn't know that until a couple of days ago. Same description. Thank you for looking out for it.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes.
Following me on the same train of thought, I wasn't, I wasn't clear. Vic, what you were saying in terms of turning a child, having to turn his or her head to avoid looking at that?
Yeah, but Paul, there was, there's been a couple of cases where the, the sign, or I guess a bus was driving by a sign and the attitude of the court was the fact that to avoid the sign, someone may, a child may have to turn their head is not sufficient to to trump someone's right of free speech.
What, at what level was that made, Vic?
I'm sorry?
At what level court was that made?
I think, I think that was used Supreme Court. I can, I'll give it to you. Get it to you. I'll give you.
I just find it, I find it hard to believe that, I mean, we all know the word that's being used. That word, that word is clearly a sexual, I mean, its origins are clearly sexual and we have no ability to protect children from, I mean, does, does someone have the ability to hang a, you know, a naked picture of, of a male or female outside their window with some verbiage on it? Do they have that right as well?
I would think a naked picture outside of a person's residence or someone maybe engaging in a sex act would be completely or someone maybe engaging in a sex act would be completely different.
How so? And they're both clearly, they're both clearly symbols, identification of sexuality of one way or another.
Yeah, no, I would disagree because, and unfortunately, because of our society nowadays and social media, the word that we're talking about is used generally by almost everyone. It's again, it's actually gaining, I think it's gaining acceptance. And so I don't think you can, you can put it into the same category.
I, I, okay, I know, I know clearly it's not, I know this is at the court level, but I just find it so disturbing, so disturbing that parents have so little help in protecting their kids from the absolute continuing coarsening of our society at every level. And this is just another example. I mean, and it frustrates me knowing that common sense cannot prevail, even in this such an obvious case of the parents trying to protect their kids from, you know, this kind of crudity, you know? I mean, they'll, they'll, whatever, we all know, they will grow into it, they will learn it soon enough. But it's enormously frustrating that there aren't some ways to protect against this obvious coarsening and crudity for kids. But anyway, I stand, I stand down, thank you.
Thank you. Did you do the same thing I did? Look up the definition?
Because I had had it earlier today. And I guess part, it's up to debate, right?
It is.
This baby does have serious political and scientific value, I don't know.
I know, when I say, when it says you're used alone or is a noun or verb in various phrases to express annoyance, contempt, or impatience. I know, it is, it's, it's, and to that end, when you say, you know, is it a political, because we also looked at that. These complaints have been coming into our offices for a number of years. And so we were looking at it through the lens of, are these political signs? You know, and where there's a requirement to remove political signs after a period of time posted. So that was the other ones that we were looking at this through. And every test we gave these, it didn't, it didn't pass the test. And I think that the legal opinion that Corporation Council has provided is where we fell every time we looked at this. Sometimes I think the more we talk about it, the more they win. That's what they want, they want us to be talking about this.
Well, the more people do it.
Right.
Because I was going to say. And it was a Supreme Court case, 1971, Cohen versus California. Because New Jersey tried to stop someone from doing that. And that case was, was used in that to defend the homeowner, and they won. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I was just know that that was 51 years ago, okay? 51 years ago, when, 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 51 years ago, I cannot remember walking around my neighborhood or anywhere in Torrington and seeing that kind of stuff, okay? I mean, it was clearly very specific and extremely isolated. We've come a long way since that time.
Well, on regular TV, you're right. On the radio.
I just wish that, I wish, I wish that would be pushed to the court to be revisited, give parents some help in, in this regard. Once again, I stand down, thank you.
All right, thank you, Vic, I appreciate your following up on that. If there is, yeah, no other business, Department Heads, I'll move into item 17. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by Mayor and members. Councilwoman Rowett?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cavanaro. All in favor? Any opposed? We'll start in the Zoom room, anything this evening, Councilman Cavanaro?
I've said my piece, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Walden? He left.
He's making a sign.
He's taking a sign.
Councilman Oliver.
Sorry, I was muted, I'm good, thanks.
Mayor, no, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Hona?
I just had a question. I know the application period closed for the ARPA grants.
That's last Sunday.
Do we have any idea on how many we have in?
We have 54 grant applications, we had 800, oh, our ARPA committee members, 54 grant applications, we had $875,000 set aside for this round. The application requests total $2.3 million, a little oversubscribed.
I think that's a good problem to help.
It is, yes. So, so the ARPA committee will do their due diligence, they'll go through all those applications, working with Northwest Community Foundation to parse out any incomplete applications or applications that might, might be better suited to the second round and see what we can bring forward to the council. They will make a recommendation to the council, council will do the efforts. Sure.
None.
Councilwoman Rowett?
And just to add to that, this is round one, so there'll be a second round. Boring pesky, and the audience is also part of this, but I really want to give credit to Julie Schonberg from Community Foundation, who basically is, you know, administer the grants applications, which is, believe me, we should be grateful for. So, and she has sent out some really good communication, we have our meeting August 10. Yes. It has been a great working committee by partisan all with the right intent in terms of making sure the money goes to the right. My other item is Heather, I'm grateful for our emails back and forth. We need to have an ordinance committee meeting, so my fellow councilmen, Armand and Paul, I would request that Heather send out a few more dates. We have some pending, important pending items to discuss, so reply back to Heather with a good date, was that?
Fair enough.
There are a number of different ordinances you might want to prioritize as to which ones we ought to do first.
Yeah.
There's quite a few coming.
Yeah, I think we have a couple of requests for some new considerations as well. Meeting last week with a few neighbors, neighbors in a few neighborhoods with the same problem, so.
Well, I'm so excited.
I know, I'm sure you're.
I think I will, you know, look to the mayor and the council department to really prioritize those for the committee. I know we have the food truck ordinance, trying to wrap that up. I think we've got some good feedback in the public hearing, and I think we can look at.
That's ready to go.
So that's like my, hopefully, I know the summer's been tough to try and get people together, but that's it there.
I'm impressed, it's August 1, and we have a full council, that's pretty impressive. All right, then, item, I will move into item 18. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public to comment on agenda items only.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minichia? Seconded by Councilwoman Hona, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To the
Thank you for approving the I recycle initiative. Tom and I are on the Ad Hoc Committee Recycling Committee, and we were very excited when we first heard about that. And I've got to make a friend in those neighborhoods so that I can bring my bottles and cans over. Hopefully, it will go so well in six months that we can expand it or something, you know, that. And it's very interesting that he's going to provide us the metrics so that we, we do know, get this stuff. The worst thing that we, we did as far as recycling goes was to go to single-stream recycling. Because what we have basically done is contaminate all the different kinds of recycling, all the different materials, you know, you put newspapers in with bottles, and if there's any liquid left on it, it gets on the newspapers or on the cardboard or whatever. So that's, we're very excited that this will, will get started in, in some part of the city. And hopefully people will think about what that really means in terms of tax dollars. Get that heavy stuff, some because bottles are heavy. You know, the cans and the plastic are not as heavy, but the glass, and there are still things that are in glass, and I'm very excited that he's looking to try and figure out what to do with liquor and wine bottles because do a little bit more of that since this COVID whole thing. And so I end up with a lot more things that I can't necessarily recycle. The other thing that hopefully we can get at some point is to get our green material out, to get the organics out. If we get the glass and cans and bottles out, and we get the organics out, we won't have that much left. And now that mirror is closed, and we're going to be sent, I mean, I don't know why Ohio wants our garbage, but you know, we're going to have to do that. And $109, that's ridiculous. And China doesn't want any of our, our stuff anymore. And so until we get the manufacturers to make their packaging better and make their materials more recyclable, and like make, like we've done in Connecticut with the mattress of folks, where you, you pay money and the mattress people are responsible for it and, and the pain. You know, that's where it has to come from, is from the manufacturers. And I'm also, as Anne said, on the ARPA, and while it is exciting to be oversubscribed, it's a little intimidating on what, how, how we're going to go through this process. But we're excited, and what she said about Julie helping us to look at it. I mean, we're, we're still going to make the decision, it's going to be assists people in the city of Torrington making the decision, but having it organized the way that Julie has organized it, and having somebody that is used to looking at grants and figuring out how to, for us to analyze it better. And we have, we have a rubric, we'll have the whole thing. And Rista Malaka is amazing with, with her depth of knowledge on this, so we'll be back to you with what we end up approving. And I know some people, I mean, obviously, $2 million, two-plus million dollars, people are going to be disappointed, but there will be a second round. And hopefully, we can also kind of prioritize those kinds of things. And maybe then there'll be other places that we can look for money to help some of those projects to, to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pesky. Still open to the public. All right. Mr. Banzer.
Good evening, everybody. Mike Banzer, proper going to taxpayer resident. I'd like to thank Mr. Michelle for looking up so much about this verbalization on signs. But you know, freedom of speech is freedom of speech, and the federal government, state government has been unable to obtain that, no matter how disrespectful it may be. Like Councilman Cavanaro brought up about sexism in windows, and you know, it is what it is. Personalized have changed over the last 40, 50 years. A lot of us did not grow up like that, there was respect. And because nobody is teaching respect, this is just getting worse and worse and worse. The best thing is for people to be educated. The best thing is for our school system to be educated and requiring parents to help educate, rather than just drop them off in the morning, pick them up in the afternoon, and that's it, that's total responsibility. I thank Mr. Michelle and your assistant for doing so much work into this, but basics is basics. Second of all, I want to just comment on the public comment section of the gentleman who brought up all the cannabis. We have to be very, very careful that instead of focusing on the tax dollars we can get on recreational cannabis, we have to look at the problems that ensues. Now, all of you have access to the internet, you all got smartphones. The state of Colorado has got tons of information on it. They're trying to figure out ways to reverse their decision. But the problem is recreational hallucinoid drugs is just that. You can't compare it to alcohol, okay? It's a form of hallucinogen, but nothing like marijuana. And what does it do, it just leads to more. So the thing about it is, is before looking at tax dollars that we can get, we just look at the contamination of our population. And if people want to travel to New York, people want to travel to Rhode Island, people want to travel Massachusetts to buy something, go ahead. It's only going to be 1% to 5% of the total want, rather than having in your backyard. Paying attention to newspaper articles of what's going on around us and other municipalities, everybody is staying away from approving it. They're pushing aside, pushing it aside, and a lot of them are starting to do no recreational cannabis. Medicinals, medicinal, it's all record, period. But recreational, it's just like going back to the 60s and Woodstock. Play the movie, that's what ends up being, and infiltrates our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banzer. Last call for public comment. All right, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Minichia. And seconded by Councilwoman Hona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all very much.
Have a good evening, everybody.
All right, see you.